Good evening. It is seven o'clock, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm calling the town council meeting to order. My name is Carl Glad. I am the town council chairman. We'll start with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. This time it goes to District Seven, Mashake.
Dear Lord, please make sure that the town of Stratford is safe and that everyone who serves our town as our elected officials, to our public workers, to our public education, are all protected, that we have the ability to work through our differences to make sure that the work that needs to be done is done and done well so that our town and people here can prosper. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to our first item on the agenda. That is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rilia.
Um, I move that the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four be dispensed with and that the minutes be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I second. Mr. Law, I second. All in favor, or is there any discussion? All in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, move down. The next item where we have an agenda item is the mayor's report, agenda item number four. Madam Mayor, to you.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, everybody. So, the Stratford Beautification Commission announced the winners of its annual beautification awards program. The curb appeal went to Annabelle Alvarez, Shannon Landscape and Garden Center, Carol Neay, Maurice Brown, Sandoval Eric, Rosemary Bellinger, Michael and Lori Lepia, and Kathleen Flynn. Thanks to all who participated and all the residents and businesses who work so diligently to keep their property and our community beautiful. The new bike lane symbols and signage along Main Street from Stratford Ave. to Barnum have been implemented during the Phase One of Complete Streets. In an effort to help everyone understand the symbols and signage, a helpful guide can be found at stratfordct.gov/street safety guide. Please note that the project is fully funded by Connecticut DOT through the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program, also referred to as LOTZIP. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This month, we reaffirm our commitment to increasing public knowledge on the importance of early detection of breast cancer and how the impacts in diagnosis and treatment and what is available. For more information and other resources, please visit www.nationalbreastcancer.org. October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we will recognize the month on Purple Thursday, or Go Purple Day, a national day of action, which is this Thursday on October seventeenth. On the seventeenth, everyone is encouraged to wear all things purple as a symbol of peace, courage, survival, honor, and personal dedication to domestic violence awareness. We are pleased to have received grant funding to support the following urban forestry initiatives: the Tree Canopy Assessment, Tree Inventory, and an Urban Forest Management Plan. These initiatives will enable the town to be more efficient in its tree work and management. The funding is provided by Connecticut Deep Urban and Community Forestry Program, that's fifteen thousand dollars, and via the Inflation Reduction Act, U.S. Forest Service Arbor Day Foundation, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The tree inventory work began last week, and you'll see certified arborists from Planet Geo walking through the town evaluating our trees. If you want, you can check out the new webpage for more information, updates on our efforts at stratfordct.gov/streettrees. October twenty-sixth, from eight to one P.M., is Stratford Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day at the Public Works Yard, which is five fifty Patterson Avenue. Old trash and recycling bins were picked up by our sanitation crew this past Saturday, and they will also be available for another collection day on October twenty-sixth. Residents may bring their old cans and bins to the transfer station on Watson Boulevard if they choose. Early voting begins later this month, and registered voters may go to the Baldwin Center to vote. For early voting days and times, in addition to pertinent voter information, please visit stratfordctgov/election2024. The Second Annual Veterans Day Parade is Saturday, November ninth. The parade steps off at eleven from Town Hall and will go to Academy Hill. We hope you can join us to recognize, honor, and salute the brave men and women who answer the call to serve our country. On Health Department news, flu and COVID vaccine clinics are in full force. Call the Health Department to make an appointment. They offer a variety of dates and times throughout the month of October, including a circus-themed kids clinic tomorrow, on the sixteenth, from two to seven P.M. In-office clinics are planned for November. With several families still needing school physicals in order for their children to start school, the Health Department added another clinic. More clinics are planned for the late winter to ensure all children can get required physicals for the spring sports and, spring and sports summer camp seasons. The Holy Name of Jesus Mobile Food Pantry Time has changed from afternoon to a morning time slot from nine to eleven A.M. The pantry is still staffed by the Health Department's volunteers from Stratford-Trumbull-Monroe M.R.C. Food is provided by Connecticut Food Share. The Health Department is still soliciting input from residents on the interest in a townwide community gardens. Please visit the Health Department's website, stratfordct.gov/health, and make your own opinion known. On community and souvenir services front, the Baldwin Center submitted a five oh nine renters rebate applications resulting in over two hundred and thirty-five thousand in rental assistance for qualified Stratford residents. Applications for energy assistance are being accepted by the Baldwin Center. Please call for more information and to schedule an appointment. The Baldwin Center gallery is featuring the work of two lordship artists, Phyllis Satin and Kathy Dunn, from October through December. They call their show "Two from First Avenue" and features many paintings inspired by Stratford. Community Services is partnering with the public schools to bo, excuse me, bolster students' emotional well-being by offering several groups this fall. At Eli Whitney, counselors are facilitating a Healing Hearts group to explore and process grief and loss through age-appropriate books and activities. At Johnson House, counselors join small groups of students outside the cafeteria. Students have a calm space where they can eat lunch and connect with each other or with our staff members. Counselors also engage the children in the Southend Community Center after-school program in peaceful pals to help them identify and share their emotions and increase in coping, relaxation, and stress management skills. James Olson, Olson, who coordinates the Stratford Partnership for Youth and Families, trained nearly a hundred individuals to recognize the signs of opioid overdose and how to administer naloxone. Individuals who completed the training also received a free naloxone kit. From the Economic Development Department, all town departments have processed the permits to begin the work at the Army Engine Plant. The Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement, also known as ESCA, is in place for the final, for the title flats. This work will be taking place simultaneously with the Upland Project and will enable PSR to use material from the moved flats as fill. A link to the PSR website, which will provide project updates on the, is on the Economic and Community Development webpage on the town of Stratford. The town of Stratford continues to work with High Axiom, the fuel cell companies, installing eleven fuel cells on the property at Contract Plating, four fifty Longbrook Avenue. The town is working with them to ensure the project can be completed prior to the bridge work on Longbrook Avenue, which will begin in April of two thousand and twenty-five. The Economic and Community Development Commission held their joint commissions meeting on September tenth at Two Roads. All the commission chairmen, as well as many town council members, attended. It was an informational meeting, allowing each commission to provide their mission statement and current projects. The Planning and Zoning Regulations Rewrite Project has had a final workshop on September eleventh. Public can still make comments through the public hearing, through the, through the process online, and the public hearing will be at the end of the project. Final comments and review for the zoning and planning commissions will happen over the next two to three weeks. Once the comments have been consolidated, it is expected the zoning commission will instruct the zoning administrator to prepare the adoption paperwork slash application, at which time it can be advertised and put on the agenda for consideration. The regulations are adopted by the zoning commission only. The planning commission will give a recommendation for its consistency with P.O.C.D. The final regs will likely to be on the November, December, or December zoning commission agenda for adoption. We had some large property sales. Two Ten Seymour Street, also known as Ten Thompson Street, was sold to Two Ten Seymour Street LLC for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars on September twenty-third. Nineteen eighty Stratford Avenue, also known as Joe's Diner, was sold for three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on September eighteenth. One Thirty Honey Spot Road to GF One Thirty Honey Spot Road LLC for one point one million, and that transaction happened on September seventeenth. Sixteen seventy-five Barnum Avenue to Northeast Luxury Salon Suites LLC for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and that transaction happened on August thirtieth. Blenden's Juice Bar located at fourteen hundred West Broad had a ribbon cutting on September twenty-fourth, and the Stratford Police Department and the Police Activities League ribbon cutting was held on October second. Latin Music Festival was held on Sunday, September twenty-fifth, and was a huge success. And the Great Pumpkin Festival will be held on this Saturday, October nineteenth, with the rain date of October twentieth at Booth Memorial Park. And the sponsor for that event is Comcast. Stratford shops small. The town of Stratford is partnering with the BRBC, which is the Bridgeport Regional Business Council, on our Shop Small initiative during the holiday season, except ours is going to begin on November first and go throughout the rest of the year, through December. Businesses interested in participating can reach out to Karen Doyle for more information, and that's my report.
Thank you. Questions for the mayor?
Mr. Chair. Sir, Mr. Frey. Thank you. Madam Mayor, could you just repeat your update regarding the energy assistance at Baldwin Center? I just missed that.
The energy assistance is available at Baldwin Center, so you can call and make an appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Very good. Seeing none, we'll move to the town attorney's report.
For my report tonight, we've invited Attorney Barry Knott, who was appointed as the receiver for Success Village, to update the council on the latest.
Good evening, folks. Thanks. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at sixteen fifty-six Main Street, Stratford. I was appointed by the Superior Court Judge Dale Radcliffe as receiver for the Success Village Apartments, comma, Inc. on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, after a trial that probably took two or three weeks and which was then interrupted by a bankruptcy filing, which took another three or four weeks to get resolved prior to the town of Stratford, the city of Bridgeport, the UI Company, and the gas company getting control of this complex, which includes nine hundred and twenty-four residential units, ninety-seven buildings, and approximately twenty-five hundred people, many of whom do not have heat and hot water. And that's why the whole thing started, because many of the people do not have heat and hot water, and they don't have heat and hot water today either. Okay? So, coincidentally, a week ago today, I celebrated my fiftieth anniversary as a lawyer. And a week before that, which would have been the twenty-fourth of September, I believe that advanced senile dementia set in to me when I accepted this receivership. Because it's been a wild ride, okay? Just let me tell you. Immediately upon appointment, we went to the C.A.O.'s office in Bridgeport, Tom Gordett. Richie Batella represented both the town of Stratford and the city of Bridgeport. Lawyers from Brown Rudnick represented the two utility companies. So, we went to the Tom Gordett's office, he's the C.A.O. in Bridgeport, and we changed all the locks. We talked about who we were going to engage as a management company. Who were we gonna, how were we gonna resolve this HVAC problem, which was a very longstanding? This complex, by the way, was built to house persons working at Remington Arms in Bridgeport during World War II. Okay? That's the whole genesis of this complex. On the other hand, it's been very efficient and reasonable living for many, many families over many, many decades in the town of Stratford. Many families have grown up in these facilities. About twenty-five percent of the units are in Stratford, seventy-five percent of the units are in Bridgeport. Both municipalities are working with me very, very well as far as coordination and that kind of thing is concerned. I got no gripe with any municipalities. So, what we decided to do, excuse me, the gentleman that had been operating the facility, his name was Tyreek Byrd. He was elected by the board in May of two thousand and twenty-two. So, he took over the facility in May of two thousand and twenty-two, and from there, it was downhill. Prior to that, a company called On the Mark Management, which is a subsidiary of Ravis, it's a legitimate, big management company. They had been operating the facility prior to Byrd taking over in two thousand and twenty-two. Everybody was happy with On the Mark. They were extremely competent. I brought them back immediately, and I had them, I was able to convince them to take over management of the facility as early as October seventh, which they did. Took me three days to negotiate their contract with them because they wanted a lot of money to manage the facility, but we were able to work out an agreement. The other thing we did was engage the services of Edgerton HVAC Company from Monroe and J.A.M. HVAC of Trumbull. Those two companies are working together to resolve the heat and hot water problem. And I had met with them, as well as with counsel for the city, counsel for the utilities, Gordett, and we tried to come up, we tried to talk to them about getting some details as to how they're going to resolve these problems. Now, as of May of two thousand and twenty-four, the state boiler inspector, with whom you do not screw around, okay? The state boiler inspector came down here and shut it down because the boilers were dangerous. Why were they dangerous? Because there was three feet of water on the floor in the boiler room, and all the gas pipes leading into the boilers were under the water, and some of them had these little bulges on the side of them that looked like they were going to explode. So, the state fire marshal shut down the boilers, as did the Stratford Fire Marshal, the Stratford Building Inspector, the Bridgeport Building Inspector, and the Bridgeport Fire Marshal. All of the officials came out, looked at the situation, said no more. Now, the existence of the three feet of water made it very difficult for these experts to figure out how we're going to get this thing straightened out. So, they were able to eliminate the water, and they determined, there's five boilers there, all went into nineteen forty-one. These things are the size of a Mack dump truck. Each one of them is the size of a Mack truck, okay? I've never seen anything like it in my life. There's a smokestack over there that's a hundred feet tall. You don't see this stuff anymore. So, when they get in there and they look at these five boilers, Edgerton felt that they were going to be able to bring back three of them: one, four, and five. Now, it doesn't, these numbers mean nothing because all boilers are capable of generating both hot water and heat. Three of them, we believe, are capable to be rehabilitated. Now, we're not interested in rehabilitating boilers that have been there since nineteen forty-one for more than a couple of months. That's all we want to get out of these boilers because that will get us through this fall as far as heat is concerned, heat is concerned. And now, if they last two or three months, that's great because in the meantime, we've got two boilers coming in from out of state, one from, one from Ohio and one from Florida. They are on their way now. They are gonna, they're gonna be, they're gonna get here in two or three weeks. They're gonna be installed, and those boilers are gonna take the place of the boilers that have been there since nineteen forty-seven. And after that, we don't care about those boilers anymore. All the infrastructure that are servicing those boilers are gonna be abandoned in place so we don't have any more expense associated with those boilers. The long-term plan here is every, every one of the ninety-seven buildings needs its own boiler. I mean, having a boiler room with five boilers the size of Mack trucks in them, I think it went out of, went out of fashion maybe in sixty-five, maybe. So, it's not the solution anymore. So, that's the long-term game plan. That's gonna cost twenty million dollars, which no one, we don't have twenty million dollars. We're never gonna have twenty million dollars. However, there may be funds available from the state, federal, or whatever, and which, and we're gonna have plenty of time to investigate the long-term plan here because the new boilers that we're bringing in from out of state will last for forty years, forever, as long as these did anyway. So, we're gonna have two boilers that will solve the problem forever. Is it a good solution? No, it's not a good solution. A good solution is every building has a little shed constructed out back somewhere, and the boilers go in there. But that's a big number, and we're gonna investigate the viability of that. Maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. If it doesn't work, we still have these boilers that are coming in. They are gonna replace the five boilers that are inside the boiler room. Right now, hot water is being provided by a rental boiler that is parked in the parking lot. If you drive over there, you'll see there's this big truck that's got some kind of a machine on it. That's the rental boiler, and that is providing hot water to the residents. That boiler is undersized. When it was rented by Mr. Byrd and his cohorts, they signed a contract to rent a boiler that was not big enough to handle the hot water for the whole complex. So, the thing has never, has never done a good job, and it's still not doing a good job. Last weekend, last Thursday, I got a call at six-thirty in the morning. I made the mistake of giving out my cellphone, telephone number, okay? So, they got me at six-thirty in the morning. We, we have no hot water. I said, okay, you know, what do you want me to do now? So, anyway, I had to go to my office. I had to get the names, to call people. As it turns out, the boiler, the temporary boiler that's in the parking lot had been locked, and it had been locked by the people from whom we had rented it. And our maintenance people couldn't get access to it. The boiler was running perfectly Thursday night. Friday morning, it wasn't running at all. So, I said to my people, we don't have keys. Go over there and break the locks. Get in there and find out what's going on, which they did. All the on-off switches servicing that machine were turned off during the night. Now, we didn't do it. We didn't have keys. The guy that had the keys has got something to answer for, but... So, we turn on all the switches, and everybody's got hot water again, okay? So, there's sabotage going on over there. People who are associated with the prior administration are running around there at two, three o'clock in the morning. We have witnesses identify them, going in and out of the boiler rooms. Today, we had, Mr. Byrd had a press conference on site at ten or, at ten, ten-thirty this morning, which I did not attend. But there were numerous people there, including my management company staff wanted to see what was going on. And that press conference got over at eleven A.M. We had an all-hands-on-deck meeting between the engineers and the HVAC people at two o'clock this afternoon over there, the, you know, the, the weekly status meeting. Between eleven o'clock this morning and two o'clock this afternoon, someone had cut through a page fence which had secured the boiler, gone through the page fence with a shovel, and broke the pipe off of the temporary boiler, spilling water all out into the street again. So, we called the Bridgeport Police. They go and investigate. They take statements and do nothing, basically. So, that's what's been going on over there. We're being subject to sabotage. And now, we're talking about bringing in security people at night and all this kind of... By the way, I found out today, Success Village Apartments has a two hundred and forty thousand dollar telephone security system with cameras. You go over there, there's cameras everywhere, inside, outside. Two hundred and forty thousand dollar contract was signed in September of two thousand and twenty-two, four months after Mr. Byrd took over. Now, what they need a two hundred and forty thousand dollar security system for is beyond me. There ain't a lot of cash roaming around between the residents. The residents don't bring cash to the office, you know, they pay by check or they, they do it online or whatever. There's no cash. What do you need? So, I'm saying to myself, these people sign a contract to buy a two hundred and forty thousand dollar security system, and they're not providing heat and hot water to the residents because they don't have any money? This is what I've been finding every day. Every day, I get a complaint from a lawyer who claims to have a judgment against the association for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. One case is in the appellate court. There are, they're in the appellate court over ten thousand dollars. They want to make law, okay? I don't want, I don't want Success making law. I want to get all this crap over with. There's a hundred and twenty cases pending in Superior Court that has Success Village Apartments on it, a hundred and twenty. Some of them are resolved, some of them aren't, some of them are foreclosures. Where people, if they get behind two, three thousand in their, their common charges, they get foreclosed. They get foreclosed out of their units. That is not gonna happen again. I'm not foreclosing people out of their co-ops for three grand. Not while I'm in charge. We're gonna work something out with these people. It's ridiculous. I don't know what the motive of the people who were running this place before were, but these are neighbors. They've lived there for decades. They get behind, they got medical problems, whatever it is, they owe three, four, five thousand in, in back rent to the association. Work something out with them. Take a mortgage on their unit or something. Don't foreclose them out. This is what I'm finding every day. The union. The union can't tell me who's in the union, who's not in the union. They can tell me what job descriptions are in the union. I get a letter from a union lawyer sending me a copy of a case that just came down from the Second Circuit Court of Appeals in New York, where the NLRB sued Success Village for failing to comply with the collective bargaining agreement that Byrd entered into with the union because he decided after he signed the contract, he doesn't want his people to be in the union anymore, so we're gonna disregard all this union stuff. It went to the Second Circuit Court of, by the, that's the, that's the highest court in this area, except for the Supreme Court of the, of the United States, Second Circuit. There's a case there. Now, I'm under orders to hire back union people, the identity of whom I don't even know. It's nuts. So, let me see, what other tidbits do I have for you? The banks. When we, when Richie and, and the lawyers went to court to get this receivership, they were told there's two accounts at the Bank of America. Oh, there were two accounts at the Bank of America. One had two hundred and forty-three dollars in it. The other one had thirty-four hundred dollars in it. Five hundred thousand dollars a month go into these accounts. Five hundred thousand dollars a month. There's thirty-four hundred in, in the bank? We had to take Bank of America to court on a contempt citation because they wouldn't cooperate with me in turning over the bank records to me. And guess what? Bank, Key Bank in, in Milford just did the same thing. We've got a hearing scheduled Thursday afternoon before Judge Radcliffe on a motion for contempt against Key Bank because they won't cooperate with me in turning over the Key Bank records. And I have documentation. There was a fire over there in which two elderly people were killed a year or two ago. That fire was in one unit that had eight apartments in it, one building with eight. They lived in one, seven others. Well, there was smoke damage. The people died. Their unit had to be fixed up. The association recovered one point five million dollars for that fire claim. I've got checks made out to Success Village, Inc. for one million, thirty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, and sixty-seven hundred and twenty dollars, about a million three. All went into Key Bank. They won't tell me. They won't even give me the name of their lawyer. Key Bank wouldn't even give me the name of their lawyer. I was dealing with a manager. I said, give me your supervisor. Got the supervisor. I said, I need to talk to bank counsel. She gives me some telephone number in wherever. I talk to that person. Oh, we don't give out bank counsel. We don't even know who bank counsel is. So I spent a half a day trying to get, find out where this million-three went without success. So Batula filed a motion for contempt against Key Bank. We're going back to the, to Radcliffe on a, on a second motion for contempt. And by the way, there's bank accounts at M&amp;T. There's bank accounts at Chase. There's bank accounts at Wells Fargo. That know, that, and the only reason we found out about the the, the Key Bank checks is because I contacted the lawyer who filed the bankruptcy on behalf of Key Bank, on, on behalf of Success, and asked him to send me a copy of its financial disclosure. Because when you file bankruptcy, you got to disclose what your assets are. So they sent me this list of a half a dozen banks. I'd never heard of these banks before as far as Success was concerned. I mean, it's, it's just unbelievable.
Attorney Knott, I think that gives the council a good overview of the hard work you have ahead of you. And if you would, perhaps we can invite you back in the future for further update?
Absolutely. Mr. Attorney Hodgson, do you have anything else to add to the attorney?
And I have nothing else for my report. I'm sure if you want, if the council members want to email questions to Attorney Knott, they can do that. You, the council's rules of procedure don't provide for questions to the town attorney.
Yeah, I'll ask it.
Certainly.
Attorney Knott, just thank you, and despite your jokes about your competency, I can attest that you're one of the sharpest attorneys there out there, and this is a good job for you. So...
I was the one that air-conditioned this building, by the way.
Well, thank you. Sometimes we turn it on.
He's eighty-five.
In the, I will ask, because we don't have questions at this point, but if, if councilmen have questions, to email them to the clerk, and then the clerk will provide them to Attorney Knott, and then we can all get them together to get the same answer. So thank you very much, and we'll, we'll, we'll let you go on to your night. But thank you.
Can I just ask a question for clarity to you?
Oh, to me, sure. To me, yes.
Because I can't ask.
Yep.
So my, my understanding from what he just reported is that there's five boilers, all right? Three is going to be in operation, two are on the way. So with the two on the way, are they going to, when those two arrive, dis, dysfunction the other three? And just allow those two that's coming in, you know, to be able to supply all of the units?
I believe that's correct, but we'll have a in-depth answer for you on that one. We'll provide to the whole council so that everybody can have that. Or you can see Mr. Knott thereafter, okay? Thank you.
You think so?
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. There is no unfinished business. We have ordinances and resolutions. Resolution six-point-two-point-one.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neal.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Update two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the town of Stratford has experienced severe damage from natural hazards, and it continues to be vulnerable to the effects that those natural hazards profiled in the plan, such that floods, winter storms, tornadoes, hurricanes, and tropical storms, sea level rise, earthquakes, dam failure, wildfires, extreme temperatures, and drought resulting in loss of property and life, economic hardship, and threats to public health and safety. And whereas the Stratford Town Council approved the previous version of the plan in two thousand nineteen, and whereas the town of Stratford and Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Government developed and received conditional approval from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, for the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Update two thousand twenty-four under the direct requirements of forty-four CFR two-hundred-and-one-point-six. And whereas the public and committee meetings were held and public input was sought in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four regarding the development and review of the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Update two thousand twenty-four. And whereas the plan specifically addresses hazard mitigation strategies and plan management procedures for the town of Stratford. Whereas the plan recommends several hazard mitigation actions, projects that will provide mitigation for specific natural hazards that impact the town of Stratford with the effect of protecting people and property from the associated with those hazards. And whereas adoption of this plan will make the town of Stratford eligible for funding to alleviate the impacts, future hazard. Now therefore, be resolved by the Town Council of the town of Stratford that the plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of the town of Stratford, and that the respective officials identified in the mitigation strategy of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommended acts assigned to them. And the future, that future revisions and planned manage, maintenance required by forty-four CFR two-hundred-and-one-point-six and FEMA are hereby adopted as a part of the, this resolution for a period of five years from the date of this resolution. And whereas the, that an annual report of the progress of imple, implement, implementation elements of the plan shall be presented to the town council alongside requirements as part of the community rating system program.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Frey.
Through you, Chair. May I request if the town planner would be able to come to the dice?
Did you have a specific question for her, or?
I have several questions.
All right. Sushmita, that's fine, yes.
Good evening.
Sushmita, thanks for unveiling yourself. I very much appreciate that.
Sure.
In the packet that I received, at the very bottom, there is, for the SE score, it says C Appendix G. I do not see Appendix G in this specific packet to basically look at the scores of how you decided which priorities and how they were ranked. Is there an Appendix G that we just did not receive?
It was not part of the package because it's actually a three-hundred-page document. And it's not just for Stratford. It's a regional hazard mitigation plan. But the appendix that is referred in that document is online, and it is posted on MetroCog webpage if you want to see. SE is short form for staply, so it's looking at the social, technical, administrative, environmental aspects, and, you know, scoring those strategies and recommendations based on different criteria and their applicability to the recommendations of the plan.
Okay, thank you for that. My follow-up question. My fellow councilman, Alvin O'Neal, when he was reading the, the specific resolution, mentioned that the town council would receive progress reports. Two thousand nineteen was the last time that this plan was actually looked at. Was there a progress report at the conclusion of two thousand nineteen that I could look at to look at where we're at right now?
So every year, as part of our community rating system program, we submit a progress report to FEMA because we receive, as a community, ten percent discount on national flood insurance policies in the town. And that is reviewed and signed by the mayor before we send it to FEMA and filed as part of, you know, public information in our office. So if you want to look at it, I can share those reports with you.
I ask that the whole council get that, actually.
I will send through Marco.
Thank you. And then my last question. I don't know if you have the packet specifically with you by any chance. Do you?
I do have my packet.
If you could grab it. I just have one question. Yeah, so if we look at item nineteen, it says ID nineteen. It was twenty-six in two thousand and nineteen.
Which page are you talking about?
This is page forty-three.
Page forty-three, okay.
Yeah, it says educate private landowners about the importance and benefits of maintaining and leaving vegetation in place to stabilize riverbanks. You following?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to better understand. The codes that you had associated for this specific action were coastal flooding and land flooding, sea level rise, prevention, education, awareness. And the department that would be overseeing this for the less than a hundred-thousand-dollar, like, budgetary item would be the conservation department, correct?
Yeah.
Could you just walk me through a little bit of like what that would look like? Does it look like flyers? Does it look like public events? What does that education to private landowners about the importance about maintaining and leaving vegetation really like, look like in a practical sense?
So we educate owners and, you know, applicants every day through our office, to conservation department, to engineering department, through our development reviews, site plan applications, subdivision reviews, and then vetements applications. So that is more formal review, but informal reviews also happen when we hold events. At, supposing for plan of conservation and development, we had events at Paradise Green. And we all act as a team. When it says the lead department is conservation department, it doesn't mean that only Kelly Kerrigan will be taking care of this, but we partner with her as planning and zoning, and the town engineer partners with us. And sometimes we bring in Larry Ciccarelli if it's emergency management. And we, we try to distribute flyers, brochures. There's a lot, a ton of information online on the town website, website under flooding. It's called a flooding webpage, and if you go in there, there's so many flyers there and brochures. If people want, we print and give them for events. Sometimes I carry them to my events, and I distribute those flood information brochures too.
Thank you, Sushmita. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Question, sure.
Ms. Gibson.
So can you just let me know a little bit more about events? I'm, I'm like an outreach guru. So I would like to know, like, what, what events do you do that at? I haven't been to anywhere there's outreach for.
Yeah, I mean, for this one...
Except for, I mean, you guys have meetings occasionally. Like, there's been some meetings at Bird's Eye Complex. But do you mean that you're out at other events and you have a table?
Yeah, yeah. We, for many projects. Like, last year, Brian O'Connor was our chairman for Planning Commission, and we were at the town green, I mean, Paradise Green for our POCD event. And even Paul was part of it. We were at the Shakespeare property. We held literally four or five events where we educated the general public about the POCD process and took their input in developing the plan. This year, we had an event at Paradise Green for Complete Streets again. We're planning one more near the train station. So we, constantly, we are planning events and educating. We had a flooding workshop in Bird's Eye. So they're all advertised through Mayor's newsletter. If you subscribe to it, you will know it.
Okay, so I would just like to, those are all wonderful. And if Councilman O'Neal doesn't mind me saying that, if we could have a little more outreach over on the South End, maybe at the Stratford, or have documents there or something, or brochures, that would be great because I don't think a lot of people in that community are getting that information.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
So there's information at the South End Community Center and at Bird's Eye all the time. We did have a flooding workshop regarding insurance. We've also done a lot of resiliency preparation work when we were doing, doing the CIRCA analysis. So they're not every month, but they are consistent throughout the year. And the community, we do significant outreach to the communities. We also go through the clergy association to reach the parishes and the congregations. So if they know folks that need that assistance, we can provide them. The Baldwin Center is also a great source, as, as is the Health Department.
Yes, for seniors and all that.
Well, no, the Baldwin Center is not just for seniors.
No, it's not just, no, I don't mean to say it's for just for seniors.
Yeah, it's the senior and, and community services aspect of it, so.
Is, is there a brochure holder at the South End? I know they're, they're, I just recently heard that the South End Center was going to be at Bird's Eye. So I guess that, for a while, until they do the renovations. So, all right, I guess we just need to let people know ourselves. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neal.
Yeah, I'm just to clarify some things. I was at the meeting at Bird's Eye, all right, representing my district. So our, our community has already been to the previous one that they had. And so because they were at the previous one, a lot of people didn't come that evening from my district, but I represented my district, and I represented it well. I'm always on top of things, you know, so I'm handling, you know, the South End. As far as, it's, it was a known fact, it's been a known fact since last year, you know, because we had meetings and stuff at the South End Community Center because of the renovation that's getting ready to happen, was moving to Bird's Eye. So we've been in communication and stuff with Ty Sims, you know, working with them with all of these things that's happening in the South End, you know. So all that stuff is being taken care of by their councilmen.
No disrespect. Thank you. Through you, Chair. I just wanted to say that I have been at some of those meetings prior to you being councilman, but I just wanted to make sure that there was some circulation of flesh because there are many people that don't know. There's new people in the community that are not aware. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item, thank you, Sushmita. Item six-point-two-point-two.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Whitaker.
Mr. Chairman, I move to move the item six-point-two-point-two. Six-point-two-point-two be approved authorizing the mayor's office to execute and deliver such grant application necessary, necessary to apply for and obtain funding from the State of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood in the, in the amount of four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars with no town match to support the childcare network in Stratford.
I will second that. Thank you.
Ms. Gibson seconds. Is there any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Frey.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to request that Molly can come to the dice. Just a question about this specific grant.
Oh, she is here. I didn't see her. Yes.
Hello.
Molly, thanks for being here today. I really appreciate it. I love apprenticeship programs. I think it's really great when we're doing this for our students, specifically in our high schools. I had a specific question regarding the centers. Could you give me a number of how many childcare centers that we actually have in Stratford?
Yes, so at this time, we have a few strong commitments, a few maybes, and a few who just don't really have the bandwidth at this time. We are hoping the grant is awarded, though at this time, the application is only submitted, so it's not a guaranteed award. And in looking at this, we have had, we've had a few discussions with the school system, the Board of Education, specifically the school readiness program. This apprenticeship program would look to mainly utilizing the high school pathways for those who are in the childhood education pathways and inserting them into childcare facilities in the area. Some that we know that would be committed to this program should it get awarded. We have Sterling House. We have the preschool program at Vicky Soto, and then the South End Community Center as well. Though others are still considering, and of course, I think once the award is actually awarded and things aren't kind of up in the air and planning it, there would be more interest in the way we proposed it in the application as well as looking to town-established preschool programs, but then also looking to third-party and at-home daycare centers because we acknowledge the childcare network goes beyond the school system.
Very much appreciate that, that explanation. My follow-up question to that is, in the actual executive summary, you wrote, I believe that the town wrote that we're going to be providing resources. I know that we are very theoretical at this point because this grant funding is not awarded yet. So thinking in that idealistic way, resources is kind of vague. Can you talk to me about what resources would mean?
Yes, so for this specific grant program, there were two pathways. One would have been the pathway if we were the childcare center ourselves, but the town actually applied as an intermediary with community services posing as said intermediary. And the resources we refer to are kind of wraparound supports that would be offered to the apprentices, but also the mentors at these facilities. And that includes... And that includes stuff that's already in-house, including like clinical counseling, mental health training, CPR training, transportation, things like that. And the grant, the way we budgeted it, it does cover a lot of that as well, but we had to showcase as an intermediary that we had the ability and resources to offer those supports to the mentors, the apprentices, because the whole goal of this program would kind of, would be to create a centralized hub for childcare facilities that families, parents, and providers can utilize.
Right, right. Sticking with this idealistic place, would you think like an earn while you learn incentive would be possible through this grant funding?
So with this, the one, the one guarantee of this program that the grant program wants to see through is the apprentices who are in the program, they would be required to secure their CDA credential by the end of their term in the program. So that's the one pro to it, but the other pro to it is this grant program allows for incentives to be paid to apprentices. And that wouldn't be coming out of the town's pocket, but the grant funding itself. And those incentives are set up at different milestones with the last payment being once they secure that CDA credential, which positions them better to enter the workforce immediately after high school graduation.
Yeah, that sounds like we're trying to create pipelines, all for that, so thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. All right, new business, item seven point one.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move that item seven point one, a lease agreement for the Short Beach Golf Clubhouse Food and Liquor Concession be approved and authorize the mayor to make any non-material item changes to enter into said lease agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Mr. Uliya seconds. Is there any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Frey.
My, the only question that I had specifically for this is residents that go to the beach that don't specifically go to the golf course to go use it for that specific reason, would they also be available, allowed to go buy stuff at this concession? Or is it exclusively for people that are using the golf course?
I can answer that, yes. Anyone can use the restaurant. It's an open public restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
And you don't go through the, you don't have to show your beach ID, it's at the top of the park so that anyone from any town could use the restaurant as well.
Thanks for clarifying.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the lease agreement is approved. Agenda item number eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Widom.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair. Ooh, there's a tie there. Mr. Green, Mr. Green was in there with the second. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned, thank you.